Welcome, everyone, to the December 12th City Council meeting. This is a big crowd tonight, so I'm going to tell you how it's going to go tonight. Because we have so many people and we have a packed agenda and you do want us to get to the last item up tonight, because the way it goes is we have the public forum, then we have a supplemental budget hearing, and then we have a state traffic laws hearing, and then we have a ordinance vacating Portion of Moss Street. Those should go, hopefully relatively quickly, then we're back to the action on the overnight camping code. So it is usually my practice to want everybody to get three minutes to sit here as long as it takes, but tonight I'm actually going to just, we're going to hear people for an hour. And it's two minutes each, so I'm not going to, I don't know how you want to do it, but I'm only going to be able to get to about thirty people out of this big pile here, so we get through the action tonight, for you. So I'm just going to roll through them. So it says, "A public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard or by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person's going to have two minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have fifteen seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes." And I just want to say, all of your comments are valuable, so if we don't get to you tonight, I hope somebody else is expressing the same thing you want us to hear. The first one up is, it looks like Vincent D. Feeny, followed by James A. Rodman, it looks like. And if you take less than two minutes, we'll get more in.
Hi, thank you. My name is Vincent Feeny. I'm a resident of Eugene. I don't know who, what ward I'm in. Basically, it's my hope that you all extend the park, the situation down there by linking in an eleventh, I'm sorry, Washington-Jefferson Street Bridge. I know what it's like to be homeless myself. When I first got out of the Marines, I nearly froze to death in my car, a car that wouldn't run, so I tough-finding work, and I know what it's like to be homeless when I first moved out here. And when forced out of work, I was homeless with the dubious distinction of having assets. I couldn't afford to live in my rentals or my home. So it's a pretty tough deal that a lot of these people are faced. We have two issues here. It's not just the homeless issue. It's an issue where people are protesting and are trying to make changes. I've been really inspired, I've been spending a lot of the time down at the camp, and I see a lot of core people, people who've been homeless, who have been rising up, getting in committees, walking to talk, going out into the community and getting money, getting supplies and so forth. There's been a lot of good, creative, innovative ideas to be able to help house some of the homeless, maybe deal with some people who have issues with substance abuse, and I confident that they could do it without the taxpayers taking a hit. And I've been so inspired that even though I'm not in the 1%, I wish I was, because then I'd be able to do more, is I have a rental outside of this area that I have high equity, low overhead, and I'll be paying it off in the not-too-distant future and turning it over to some disabled veterans group. So I'd like to see people in the community take that example, and there's a lot of people in the community who have, maybe kids don't live at home anymore, they could maybe have an extra bedroom for some of the homeless. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is James Rodman, followed by Jamil Jana.
James A. Rodman. Been a citizen of Eugene for fifty-five years. When this first started, I felt real strong about Occupy. But as it moved on, it got way out of hand, and it's getting way out of hand now. What it's going to cost the citizens of Eugene down the road to stop this, and what's going to happen when the next batch of people come on, the abortion people, or the loggers, or somebody else? It's going to set an example that they can do the same thing they're doing here and get away with it. The laws have been broke, and laws are laws, and I think it's just getting way out of hand. I do feel for the homeless. Mental health needs a lot of help, too, but it's turned into quagmire. It's just got way out of hand. And I believe in demonstrating and stuff, but you do it by the law. You follow the law. And I've been raised that way, and I've raised my kids that way. And I feel that we could, the budget's going to be, where are you going to get the money for this? Who's going to get cut? Is it sheriff, the police? And when this does get broke up, what happens? Officer Kearns is already worried probably about breaking it up if he has to, you know, tell him to move on. Somebody's going to get hurt. Things are going to happen. People are going to get sick down there. The wastewater they addressed in your workshop, I think that's probably going in the storm drains. I don't know that for a fact, but I would guess that is, because that's a lot of water to handle. I don't think they have ample amount of toilets down there. I just think they could protest from the city park hours, from the hours they need to, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Next is, up, up, no clapping, please. Jamil Jana, followed by Gwyneth Van Frank.
I'm Jamil Jana. I am in the Whittaker, Eugene, Oregon. I just want to focus on one statement that I heard from several of the councilors, and that is that we can continue to deal with the problem of homelessness, but we don't need a camp. So when we started this protest, we were quite aware, no later than the first night of the occupation, that the unhoused would be an integral part of the struggle. And we had a choice, a lot of occupations did. Either exclude or marginalize the unhoused, treating them, as we often do in this country, as an inevitable outcome, or welcome them into our movement as other humans who are simply less fortunate. Given our rally and cry, we are the ninety-nine percent, but even more, the impressive results of our direct, honest engagement with all of those at the site, the choice was obvious. Problem is, I mean, my understanding is, not for one moment have people in Occupy Eugene lost focus of the fact that this is a protest. And I don't just mean the people who started the protest. It is not a homeless camp. We don't call it that. I think that's a little bit disparaging, actually. Why? Just as one example, I'll never forget the words of one occupier at Mill Race who pointed out that if this is a food kitchen, he had no interest in being there. There are plenty of food kitchens in Eugene. The reason should be obvious. We are part of this movement because we understood quite clearly that the reasons for the large and growing population of the unhoused are systemic. Paul Kirkman just wrote recently in the New York Times, "It is time to start calling the current situation what it is. It's a depression. Unemployment in both America and Europe remains disastrously high. Leaders and institutions are increasingly discredited, and democratic values are under siege." So what's happening here is obviously bigger than this city, and that's what always makes it a protest, and anyone who has a chance to go down to our site and participate in the three different types of meetings that we have every night, and to participate in the collaborative engagement that's going on between all kinds of parts of the community. I mean, who in this room supports Occupy Eugene? How many people here? Please stand up.
Thank you. Next is Gwyneth Van Frank, followed by Kathleen Piper.
I'm Gwyneth Van Frank, and I'm speaking from here. I'm here to ask you to please consider option four, and I'm with the Eugene Peace Choir.
Thank you. Catherine Piper, you're next.
(inaudible)
Uh-uh, uh-uh, nope. Guys, we can't, no.
Take a recess.
Take a recess, take a recess. Take a recess. Take a recess.
(inaudible)
One minute. (inaudible) 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 Nah, I just never get enough baseball touch. So I want you to know that I love those singers, but I can't say it's okay for you to do that if I can't say it's okay for people that I disagree with to do that. You have to treat people equally, and so I'm just telling you, you just took up some invaluable time that people had to speak, and I just want you to honor, okay, I just want you to honor the way we're running the meeting, please. So Kathleen Piper's next, followed by Lauren Reagan.
I need to put my time to the other person.
Okay, Lauren Reagan, followed by Diane Thurlo.
Lauren Reagan, 259 East Fifth Ave. And I'm going to take my two minutes to address the piece about accountability of Occupy Eugene. As a civil rights lawyer and somebody who's been involved since the very beginning, we have been incredibly transparent with the city in working with them to ensure the safest and healthiest site that is possible. And I think that the safety and health issues have been grossly overblown. We have medical staff, psychological treatment, and all sorts of other professionals on-site that have been giving many of these people the only health care that they have had in years. And in working with the city, we have had numerous meetings, including, for the first time last Friday, we had our first long-term planning meeting with city staff to come up with a permanent site and to improve what has come into place by way of protest. We're asking that the exemption be continued until this permanent location can be planned and constructed. The site has become safer over the last two weeks, not less safe. As things get colder, the people actually have dwindled in number, not increased, and we've heard this morning from the social service agencies that the worst thing the city could do was close down what we have provided. We can't provide services to disabled people who have nothing for shelter right now. The groups that we are serving are mostly younger, veterans, people who can engage in protest with us. We're willing to provide the city with bi-weekly reports on the progress of our permanent site, as well as what's going on currently on the current site and with our protests. We need an exemption for fires on the condition that we would work with the fire marshal to build safe places to keep people warm so they don't freeze to death. We believe that the report that was provided by the chief and was commented by the city manager were in bad faith and had a bunch of spurious allegations in them as well.
Thank you. Diane Thurlo is next, followed by Becky Lemler.
Hello, my name is Diane Thurlo. I live in South Eugene. First off, I'm really disappointed at the way that you handled that choir. If they were acting inappropriately, which I believe they were, according to your rules, what you should have done is had the police escort them out, rather than you being cowards and you walking out while the rest of us have to sit here and listen to something that you feel is out of order. Makes no sense to me in terms of how to run a meeting. You were on the defense. You're in charge, you're supposed to be on the offense. The second thing I want to say is, if, in terms of the costs of this camp where these people are living, any expenses, I would like to suggest that any of you city council people who are in favor of this camp, that your salaries, that you volunteer up your salaries to pay for any of the out-of-pocket expenses that are, to take care of the expenses of this camp. Police, the property that's been destroyed, since you're in favor of it, they're breaking the law, you need to pay for it. I don't want to pay for it. It's against the law. Second, third of all, I've been in contact with an attorney today, and let me just say initially, this homeless camp issue, I feel for the homeless like anybody else does. It's your, it is your job.
Excuse me, this is my. Please. Everybody, be respectful of everybody, please.
It is your job to be sure that the homeless are taken care of, so just deal with it. Get together, figure out what your strategies are, and take care of them. But this is a cover-up so that everyone will get on the bandwagon for these Occupy people who, that's not their issue.
Thank you. Becky Lemler is next, followed by Jonathan Schwartz. No clapping, please.
My name's Becky Lemler. I'm from Elmira. Enough is enough. The Occupy movement that was sweeping the country is now leaving the country sweeping. Sweeping after their messes they leave, sweeping the areas with diseases where too many people are together without proper sanitary facilities, sweeping pollution into our rivers, sweeping patrons away from nearby businesses, sweeping funds once used to feed the homeless into higher costs for police services, which have increased more than 200% thanks to these people who have been allowed to dismiss our laws and trample our public property, property that is paid for by my tax dollars to repair. Whatever their original message was supposed to be, it has been completely obliterated by their actions of harboring minor runaways, felons, sex offenders, illicit drug abuse, open fires, indecent exposure, repeated open sexual acts, violence, rapes, thievery, disorderly conduct, endangering our police officers, arrests, and now reports of possible productions of Molotov cocktails and stashes of rocks in case of a riot most likely to occur if they are told to disband their fortresses by December 15th. With our cities now telling, with other cities now telling Occupy their occupation is over, our community is now a magnet to these people. We need to put an end to this camp out before they converge into our community, causing even more problems and issues. Occupy is not a homeless haven. It has become and turned into a criminal infestation. Thank you.
So, just a minute, please. So I just, I know this is a big crowd, and I know people have very strong feelings, but we try really hard to have this to be a place where people can have differences of opinion and be treated respectfully. And so even though you may not like some of the things that are said, yeah, better to use the hands than the mouth, please. Okay. Without clapping, just the silent stuff, please, yes.
Hello, thank you. I'm Jonathan Schwartz. I live in Eugene. I believe I belong to Ms. Ortiz's ward. So I have a lot to say. I'm hoping a lot of it will be covered by people a little bit more eloquent than I am. I'm going to try to be quick. So accountability, I agree 100%.
Somebody's on the light switch.
This is eating to my time. So I think that accountability is very important, and I think that it does come from both sides, and I think that the Occupy Eugene movement would be very happy to be very accountable, and that if we can identify clear issues, that those solutions will be come up with. I think that closing it down right now in the middle of the winter is just a, from a humane, from a person point of view, is just the wrong thing to do right now. We need to let it go till spring when we're going to be able to move things more, it's going to be more conducive to moving. If things have to move right now, work with the Occupy Eugene movement, and we will find a solution. This is a wonderful experiment happening. I hope you all read the letter I wrote. I'm going to read just a quick paragraph. "I have witnessed the emergence of young leaders here. Many of the people I see standing up are young women from the street families. These young women are being forged into community leaders of tomorrow. They are learning skills from experienced organizers, are taking responsibility for themselves and their community, and are earning the respect of their peers. This alone is reason enough to allow this wonderful social experiment to continue." I've heard some hyperbole tonight. I've heard numbers, I'm not quite sure, but 50,000 to 150,000, and quickly I hear some of the councilors or a counselor say hundreds of thousands. I don't think we need that kind of hyperbole. Further, we talk about responsibility. I'd like to pledge right now that I will pay one-tenth of that fence. I will donate that money, and I'm sure there's another nine people in here that will donate that amount. We'll get that fence covered. This will continue. If the city will identify clear issues for us, we will address them. We want it to be clean. We want this to be a wonderful experiment that just grows and becomes a beautiful, even more beautiful thing. Thank you.
Jonathan Schwartz is next.
That was me.
That was you? All right, then we've got Mark Schulenberg, followed by Ruth Demler. Mark? I don't see Mark. Okay, Ruth Demler, followed by David Ivan Piccioni.
Ruth Demler, Allen Solinko District, award. I'm here to say that I hope that you'll extend the time. This is the middle of winter, the coldest days that we've had. This is not the time to be moving the camp. Let me tell you a little bit about an visit I had to several of the rallies here in Eugene. I went to the rallies, and I expected chaotic discussions and really nothing accomplished. But I was amazed. The first one I went to, they had 150 people. They formed committees, I believe it was the first rally they had. They formed 15 committees. Each committee took a section of the large room and discussed what they were planning for the next two weeks. They were organized, they set dates that they were to meet at, and after that, and when the evening was through, then they had the communication committee contact all the different committees and have the dates reinforced so that people were reminded. The second rally I went to had over 200 people, people of every walks of life. We had doctors there, we had attorneys, we had quite a few students from the university. And each of the 15 committees reported. They had less than five minutes to report. The reports were amazing on accomplishments they had made in two weeks. Setting up the food, setting up the sanitation, so that they had sanitation and enough potties there every week. Seeing that they had security, where people are walking the territory every night to make sure the place is secure.
Thank you.
It was an amazing experience, and I hope all of you can visit.
Thank you. Thank you. David Ivan Piccioni, I'm sorry if I'm ruining your name, and Jerry Smith.
Hello. The country's.
Will you give your name first?
My name is David Ivan Piccioni.
Thank you.
This country's principle of democracy promises that everyone has a voice and a vote. Because of the high-paid lobbyists and other ways of exerting influence, Occupy has been the means of expression of the poor and the disenfranchised. It is undemocratic to prevent this population from exerting political power through protest and organizing. We exact of this city a park, the Washington-Jefferson Park, where we can organize in the area and form basic structures to fit the living in the Eugene elements at this time of year and in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Smith is next, followed by Thomas Price.
I'm Jerry Smith, a retired social worker. I've worked with issues of homelessness for about 50 years. I think the way the camp is dealt with the homeless is just exemplary. They've taken people who are abandoned and living lives of chaos, hiding because there's no legal place for them to live, and gotten them into being good citizens there. Occupy with the community volunteers supports the camp with food and equipment, pays for most everything. There are people here who are telling one amount to exaggerations and lies based on fear. They're afraid the city's going to spend a whole lot of money, and they're not. In the Bible, Matthew 25, Jesus tells us what we must do for the poorest of the poor. We must house them, give them food, drink, and clothing. We don't let them get sick or jailed without our help. Our wealthy society used to guarantee this through government action and then pulled back at safety net. Right now, our lobby-corrupted government guarantees banks unbelievable amounts of our resources. If a taxpayer here wants to get mad, focus it in the right direction, for God's sakes. Maximize what's available to the richest at the top and withholding from the bottom. Occupy is trying to bring economic and social justice. In the meantime, here in Eugene, Occupy takes cares of those Jesus wanted to be loved. Give us the time to maintain the camp site and quit exaggerating about how much it costs because our community is supporting it. Official terrorism would be what it amounts to if you tear down tents in the middle of winter, and it would look like a hate crime, and I don't think that's the tenor of the Eugene government.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thomas Price is next, followed by Sean Haskins.
Ladies and gentlemen, Thomas Price, Ward 8, Chris. You and I have labored on many things, envision Eugene and many other issues of this community. Since 1979, 1997, sorry, I've walked with the homeless in this community. This Occupy Eugene is not just a homeless issue. We have a problem here. We have been sold out. All of Churchill area, all of the other neighborhoods do not own equity in their house that they'd had two years ago or more. We have upside-down loans everywhere. And while I'm not a spokesperson for Occupy, I have been a leader in the community and have entered the camp and come alongside my brothers and sisters. As Dreks reminds me, this is we Eugene. Eugene is a community. These are my brothers and sisters standing beside me, behind me, in front of me. We have a need to not draw that line in the sand, because that is where we will spend more money, waste more money, and not solve the problem. I implore you, please walk beside me. Walk with us. We are a community. We need to heal. And that's why the homeless have come to this protest, because we are about trying to deal with the issues that are not easy to deal with. I am not a spokesman again, but I am a community member, and I have entered the camp. I have more information than many of you on the board, or on the council. I By going Thursday night, learned what this means.
Thank you. Sean Haskins is next followed by Carol Berg Caldwell.
Sean Haskins, Springfield. I hope you don't mind me speaking. So I was listening to the pre-meeting work session and I heard a lot of interesting things, so I wanted to address my comments specifically to Councilor Clark so that we can maybe address the issue of whether you're facing a group of people or an event or protest or what it is. Make no mistake, we are an event. Welcome to history. I hope that it remembers you well someday down the road. I know that people on both sides of this issue, I'm going to speak quickly, I've got long comments, are trying to keep the council's decision tonight from ballooning into a larger issue than it needs to be in order to keep it from becoming, say, a small committee referendum on the Occupy Eugene movement as a whole. But it is a large issue and I'm going to tell you why specifically. The camp that now exists at Washington-Jefferson Park exists because of the confluence of two major trends or conditions of life here in the United States. First, the increasing sense of distance between citizens and the instruments of their government as corporate and semi-corporate interests have taken a firm and public hold of the reins of both public discourse via government policy and of the instruments of dissemination that enable that discourse, right, the media specifically. Second, the almost invisible epidemic that's overcoming our society now. Not homelessness, not even unemployment, although these are the ones that get all the big media attention, but rather the systematic impoverishment and indebtedness of the majority of our population. The most significant victims of this impoverishment are, of course, as you see around our community, the homeless who suffer in three major ways. First, the personal impoverishment, whatever causes it, it makes them vulnerable. Second, the tightening hold on government by the anti-tax lobby almost guarantees a scarcity of resource to help alleviate that problem. Third, the tightening of the wealthy of the American people that means that most folks in the community have fewer resources to chip in where government cannot. What does this do? It leaves the wealthiest among us in the position of de facto policymakers without really having to lobby for it. They've got the money in order to support these public services.
Thank you. Next is Carol Berg Caldwell followed by Michelle Townsend.
Thank you. Carol Caldwell, Councilor Solinkas Ward. We've heard recently about some of the costs surrounding Occupy Eugene and some discussions here tonight about concerns about that, but for perspective, I'd like to ponder some other potential costs. What might the cost be when the lights and the eyes of many unhoused folk at Occupy Eugene dim if the camp is shut down so things will return to so-called normal? I've observed these past 20 months observing at municipal court this awful state of normal, meaning illegal camping. I've seen the results of vigorous ticketings, arrests for illegal camping. I've seen the look of the hunted in the eyes of these houseless, the unwanted folk. I've seen their despair. Costs? Frankly, the costs of cops, courts, jails, sightings, arrestings, prosecuting, jailing the unhoused makes the costs of Occupy Eugene mere chump change comparatively. In recent weeks, I've seen a real difference in the eyes and faces of the houseless at Occupy Eugene. I see purpose, a sense of belonging, engagement in their community, our community. I see improved health resulting from thousands of nutritious meals served thanks to generous donations. What will the cost be if all this ends? Courts and jails clogged again? Police time again consumed hunting the houseless? Have you the fiscally smart and humane will to prevent or ease this? I believe you do. I know even judges, jailers, and police where they've told me so. See the futility of this failed revolving door. We've failed them too. These are public servants. We must do a better job. Occupy Eugene and others have brought this to the forefront. Please allow a reasonable extension, time for more social services, city programs, others to coalesce around a more broad-based, community-involved, long-term, ongoing program to aid the needy. I'm profoundly moved by the sheer hard work and caring from so many at Occupy Eugene. Finally, it matters not a whit what any of our political persuasions or parties are for we are one community with a shared concern. I so appreciate the level-headed professional work of EPD who've worked hard to build these bridges. Thank you.
Michelle Townsend is next followed by Irene Cardenas.
Distinguished council members, for your approval, I'd like to submit our petition to the mayor and the city council of Eugene. We, the undersigned, request the city of Eugene continue to partner with Occupy Eugene to provide a safe community to the now hundreds of homeless who have been forced onto the streets due to the economic injustices of our time and who have now found a safe community at the Washington-Jefferson Park Village. The citizens of Eugene have donated to Occupy Eugene tents, sleeping bags, clothing, temporary building materials, kitchen equipment, and sufficient food for the occupation to cook and serve over 1,000 meals a day to the hungry. The Occupy volunteers provide thousands of hours of volunteer work each month. We ask that the city of Eugene continue to make the encampment space available and also provide electricity and water to the site in order to assist the citizens and volunteers create a more humane existence to the homeless we serve. This will help the occupation continue to meet the needs of our local homeless while pushing forth with their agenda to address the national problems that cause homelessness and the many other problems of social and economic injustice. We ask that the encampment be supported until we, the people, the city of Eugene, and Occupy Eugene are able to find a better solution for our fellow citizens who have no homes but those that they now make Occupy Eugene encampment. I have 1,700 signatures here.
Thank you.
I would also like to address to you our Occupy Eugene Village community agreements, page 1 and 2. We've gone around and found out what the folks at Occupy Eugene want for themselves. We want to submit this document also. We also have, in 24 hours, have gained over 150 signatures on said document and are planning on getting every single member of the encampment to either sign or leave. So I just thank you for your time and your consideration on these documents.
Next is Irene Cardenas followed by Jeff Gant.
My name is Irene Cardenas. I recently came to Eugene for the nature and human rights activist, not knowing Occupy was ongoing and I've been staying there for a few days. As De Ziderata says, "You are a child of the universe, no less than the trees and the stars. You have a right to be here." The history of civilization is people, causing people to fear other people rather than recognizing our unity as we all get nourishment and life from the earth which feeds us like a mother. And as Joni Mitchell said, "We are stardust, the sun and earth which give us life." We're born out of the center of our galaxy. As Kenyan environmentalist Wengari Mati, recently deceased Nobel Peace Prize winner, saw her community descend into poverty and homelessness when mass agriculture took over people's homes in nature where they had clean streams, food from the trees, dead wood for energy. So many people have adapted to this overtaking, this violation of our natural homes that they think it's right. When they yell, "Get a job," I want to say, "Get a tent." I'm not homeless because the earth is my home. I don't like going to homeless centers where I'm treated like I'm wrong. When I choose the healthiest environment, which is nature, where more neurons grow, the best place to heal, where people make wiser, better decisions. And even if most of nature's empowerment to feed us all and host all our lives is violated, I ask that she be empowered in one tiny part here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Gant followed by Ross Howard.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Jeff Gant. I'm a third-generation Eugenian. I am an attorney. I'm an engineer and I'm a builder. I've been active in the Occupy for a long time. I'm here to represent them. I want to first start by rejecting outright what I've been hearing about the conditions in our camp. They are not horrid, they are not dangerous. You don't know what you're talking about if that's what you think is going on down there. There have been problems. They are improving every day and I'm one of the people that's helping to make that improve. We have difficulties in getting there because we have our heads in a noose and we're hoping that you're going to take our heads out of that noose. And as we've already heard today, somebody is willing to step to the plate and many more will step to the plate to help us deal with what we need to deal with. We have issues with the kitchen. We will fix that as soon as we have resources. Those resources will show up in three days if you let us have this extension. I heard Councilor Ortiz asking us, she wants us to meet halfway. She wants us to know that we're willing to meet halfway. We're willing to meet you 75, 90% of the way. We've taken the leadership role in this as far as we're concerned. We initiated this task force meeting that started last week. We have been asking you to come to the table and you have, and thank you, and other agencies have, and they have been expressing their willingness. There was also a meeting today. They have been openly expressing their willingness to work with us. We have told them and we are telling you, we do want to work with you. We don't want to cost you money, as little as possible. We have volunteers. I have an army of volunteers ready to help me out and I will have the resources to make very good use of their tools. We need a little bit of time to come up with a real plan. We have professionals. We have service agencies in this community. We've already been speaking with them. They're ready to talk to us. We want to come back to you with a real plan that will be substantive, long-term solutions. We recognize that this isn't going to happen tomorrow. I think you understand this takes a little bit of time to do something smartly and intelligently and we are here to make that happen. Thank you.
Next is Ross Howard followed by M. B. Lazar.
Hello. I'm Ross Howard. I live in Eugene. Had a lot more to say, but we've got a time cut down here. I'm going to take you back to 1970, May. As in my second tour in Vietnam, I realized things were going wrong. So I participated in my first protest in an auditorium with a bunch of Buddhist monks, civilians. Doors got kicked in. The police came in. I was arrested, taken out the back door, and the shooting began. There's a capital crime there. They had no First Amendment rights. A year ago in December, the air of spring began. All over the country, we've heard and seen the abuses that happened. Our president stood up and said that those people deserve their rights, that everybody has the right to stand up and protest in a peaceful way. This isn't about a homeless camp. It's about our First Amendment rights. Everybody has that right to stand up and there's no timeframe based on it. We have the right, given to us by our constitution, to assemble and to do the best job we can in the process and we're doing a great job. I've watched amazing changes happen. I've seen people who came to this camp doing nothing and they're doing a lot now. We're succeeding where others have failed. To throw us out of this camp now would only mean having me arrested again 40 years after I stood up for other people's rights. It's not right to throw the people out of this camp at this time. Work with us and we promise you'll see what you want to see come out of this. Less homeless people, more people willing to work, and a new face of democracy. Show us the face of democracy.
Thank you all. M. B. Lazar is next followed by Kelly Cooper.
As a small business owner, now, excuse me, my name is Lazar and as a small business owner downtown, I would like to support the Occupy Eugene and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kelly Cooper is next followed by Gary Cornelius. Kelly Cooper? Okay, Gary Cornelius.
Good evening. I'm Gary Cornelius. I'm a resident of the fine city of Glenwood. For 28 years, I worked with disabled folks, many of them homeless and mentally ill, or people who experience developmental disabilities, and many of them marginalized and disenfranchised and/or on the low end of the socioeconomic scale. The Occupy Wall Street movement, especially the Eugene version, is the closest that many people, not just those who experience disability or have minimal income, have come to having hoped that change might really happen. There are also unhoused veterans and seniors being supported here. Eugene is to be commended for its ability to avoid the kind of violence and unrest at times at the hand of police prompted by elected leaders that have plagued other cities, including Portland. There is an opportunity here for significant change to occur if the Occupy Eugene movement is allowed to progress, grow, plan for the future, and seek ways for the positive changes that have occurred to continue, but they need more time to find and develop a longer-term location and lasting solutions. Services and supports for people who experience disabilities and homelessness have been dwindling for years and the trend is for such lessening of services to continue. The Occupy movement has shined a light on the need for such support. The movement offers an opportunity for us to develop better and longer-term supports for people who are marginalized through no fault of their own and would benefit greatly from such support, support the government has provided in the past but which the government is increasingly unable or unwilling to do. The conditions that increasingly prevail in our country in times past have led to revolutions because those in power were unwilling to do the right thing. Let's avoid revolution and take advantage of the tremendous opportunity that we've been given to develop an alternative. The permanent changes that could result of the Occupy movement is permitted to stay longer where it is so as to develop plans for permanent change. Thank you.
Chuck Gerard is next followed by Mark Callahan.
See, my name's Ben Rubaker. I'll read Chuck's remarks here. I am Chuck Gerard. I'm coordinator of the White Bird Clinic. What has taken place over the past two months is nothing less than astounding. A variety of individuals in Lane County came together to raise awareness about terrible problems facing our nation and our world. They inadvertently ended up dealing with a community issue that we collectively have been unable to adequately address and with no planning or funding or existing organization, they have begun finding answers, in part through an outpouring of generosity from a greater community support base than I would have anticipated. Are there problems? You bet. Is it perfect? Definitely not. I do not believe that a muddy park is where this should be happening, but it's the only thing worse would be nowhere. I do not believe it is ideal to be in a tent or under a tarp in the winter. The only thing worse is no tent at all. I know you're concerned about costs as you should be. Yes, there have been situations requiring the assistance of police, but most of the increased costs have been due to police presence at protest activities which would not be taking place regardless of the Occupy site. I also know that you are concerned about safety. No one has died at the Occupy, although I recognize that as a major worry. If that happens, it's not your fault. 50 to 100 homeless citizens die each year in our fair city usually alone. I have to wonder if someone would have found Major Tom Egan in time had he been at the Occupy. The human service system only last week began to talk with the city about how to work with the city and with Occupy Eugene to help with the transition from what has begun to what could be. Until recently, some of our legal citizens were illegal because of the camping ban. If you can't just abolish the camping ban, I ask that you please at least extend the exemption for Occupy Eugene while they and you and human service agencies work together to try and develop this site or an alternative site with resources and services which would improve the plight of these, our community's most desperate members. If we can't do it, what have we lost? But if we can figure this out, it would be marvelous what we may gain. Thank you.
Mark Callahan's next followed by Clara Saret.
Good evening, members of this Eugene City Council. My name is Mark Callahan. I live in the North Eugene area in Councilor Polings Ward. I'm here tonight to advocate against extending the December 15 camping exemption deadline for Occupy Eugene. As a member of the 53% that actually pays taxes, I am very concerned that over $115,000 of our taxpayer money has been paid out as a result of allowing Occupy Eugene to remain in a public park that other taxpayers cannot freely use due to health and safety concerns. As was indicated in the recent Eugene Police Department report, camping is not speech. This is not the '60s and '70s. While members of this council may have participated in the protests during that time period, members of this council, as members of this council, your job is to enforce the laws of Eugene for all citizens of Eugene, not just for some citizens of Eugene while granting others special interest groups exemptions. If I or other citizens of Eugene that are not part of the Occupy Eugene group wanted to build a structure, cook and serve food to the public, or provide medical care to the public, all activities would require a permit or a license to do so. I and other citizens of Eugene have yet to see any proof of any license or permit issued to the Occupy Eugene group to cook and serve food to the public, build structures, or provide medical care to the public. The penalties according to the law for doing these activities without a permit or license or even liability insurance are fines, jail, or both. Occupy Eugene has stated that they will continue to defy the laws and this council even if the exemption is not extended. Perhaps the city of Eugene should issue an invoice to the Occupy Eugene group to pay back the
Clara Saret is next, followed by Lotus.
Good evening, my name is Clara Saret. I live at three-six-three Adams Street in Andrew Ortiz's Ward. I'm here to urge you to continue to let the Occupy Eugene exist at its current location or allow them to move to an equivalent space. I thank this council, the mayor, the city manager, the chief of police for the space you have provided for Occupy and the respect you have shown for their right to engage in their ongoing protest. The Occupy Eugene camp is both a protest site and a refuge. Occupy Eugene has created a public space for people to come together and share ideas for moving our country towards greater equality and at the same time has become a safe space for many homeless residents. Our city has struggled to address the needs of our homeless residents with limited funds and in the absence of the political will to take bold action. The current financial crisis has increased the homeless population and reduced funding for services. Occupy has effectively cast a bright light on the imbalance of power that has led to this crisis, thus earning the right to be called a protest movement. In the process of holding this continuous, public, encamped protest, they have provided homeless and at-risk people a safer space to Occupy as well, a space where they feel valued and included. We have excellent social services in this community, but they are overwhelmed with diminishing resources. Just this past week, some of those social service providers began to connect with the Occupy organizers to explore how they can work together to serve people in immediate need and more importantly, join together to find a more permanent solution to the lack of housing and other services. As the chair of the City of Eugene Budget Committee and the Human Services Commission, I know that in spite of best intentions, our city is struggling to effectively address homelessness. I am ready to let the creative and dedicated people involved with Occupy Eugene and our social service agencies such as Whitebird take this on. I believe they need the space to begin this work and that the least the city of Eugene can do is provide them with a small parcel of public space to do that. We have a unique opportunity in this community to provide a space for our neighbors to work together and attempt to address some of the core challenges we face. I urge you to give them that space. Thank you.
Lotus is next, followed by Teri Ferguson.
Hello, my name is Lotus and I live at Washington Jefferson Park. I just want to first of all say thank you to you, Mayor Piercey, and to all the members of the city council. I've spent a lot of time talking with you guys and reading emails and communications, and I just want to thank you for all the time and the effort that you have put into listening to us and to really try and reach an understanding with the people in the community. I also want to thank the police department and the other members of the community who have come to speak regardless of whether you are speaking for Occupy Eugene or not. I think it really illustrates the freeness of speech that we are being given, and that's something that is really important to the occupiers. Secondly, a lot of people have been up here talking about rules, and I just want to say, people not rules. Thirdly, soup kitchens, programs that are in place right now, they're amazing, but as someone said a few days ago and made a really good point, they're like putting Band-Aids on a head wound. Honestly, it's a very, very small, it's minimizing and marginalizing, and what we need is a long-term solution which includes making the people feel welcome and services like that where you have to go and you have to be humbled and you have to feel like you're less than, do not do that. Third, I also dislike the term homeless because this is the earth and we all live here and we all have a home. So calling anyone homeless or calling it a homeless camp, I personally find quite insulting considering I live there and that's my home. And finally, finally, we would like to ask you a question, and that is, go ahead.
Come to my birthday party on.
We are having a celebration onsite on Friday, and everyone is invited.
Teri Ferguson is next, followed by Scotty Perry.
Hi, my name's Teri Ferguson. I'm a middle-class American, homeowner, small-business owner, wife, mother, and part-time student, and I pay taxes. I go to church on Sundays and I'm a member of Occupy Eugene. I also feel safe onsite and it warms my heart to see so many people having their basic human needs met. I want you to know that I'm not alone and there are many others that are just like myself. I know each of you have a responsibility that comes along with occupying the seats you sit up there in, and I know you believe you're faced with a difficult decision. Trust me, I read the report from the city manager about all the service calls, but these are crimes that have been going on in this city each and every night for years, and they've mostly gone unreported, up until now that is. And this is just another way in which Occupy Eugene has assisted the city in dealing with its own shadow. But still, I understand we think this decision is difficult, but I believe if we move from a place of our heart, the decision isn't difficult. In truth, it's really simple. Occupy Eugene is a seed that's been planted and has only begun to sprout, but if you pull it now, we'll never see the flower it was meant to be. I invite you to listen to your heart, ask yourself, what do you believe is possible? And maybe rather than ask, how could you, ask yourself this, how could you not?
Scotty Perry's next, followed by Eugene Wander.
Our village is a mess. You guys want a mess? Our healthcare system is a mess. Our environment is a mess.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Scotty Perry.
Thank you.
Music teacher. Our healthcare system is a mess, our environment is a mess, the endless wars on which we bestow trillions of our oh-so-precious tax dollars is a bloody mess. Our government and the corporations who promote all of these messes is a gargantuan mess. So why not forcibly remove them? Huh? Because they're following the rules that they can afford to buy or because we are easy to pick on? We who are handing you a golden opportunity to build on this already unprecedented event that is already cleaning up the mess that is killing us all? Yeah, we are an event and we are a group. And if I'm a good judge of character and a lot of people in this community think that I am, then believe me when I say that citizens in this group are easily the most compassionate, creative, caring, educated, dedicated, and loving people that I have ever had the pleasure of working side by side with. But why the camp? Why the camp? Why the camp? That's all I keep hearing is why the camp? Because the camp is what has made this all possible. Because the camp is what makes this different than anything we've ever seen before. If you like the way things have been going, then by all means, support the status quo. If you want real change, then please join us, please help us, and at the very least, don't get in our way, please. We are already moving on. We have been moving on for seven weeks now and we have no plans on stopping. Personally, I plan on moving on to more comfortable structures at camp. I plan on moving on to increased safety measures at camp. I plan on moving on to some very innovative educational programs with the young and the old, the housed and the unhoused teaching each other and learning from each other side by side. And if need be, I plan on moving on to jail, peaceably, lovingly, and nonviolently should we be forcibly evicted. And I implore every single one of my dear friends, families, and colleagues in this beautiful town to join me right there at the front line if and when such short-sighted authorities decide to come and take us away. And please give everybody a chance tonight, everybody. This is one of the most important things we've ever discussed. Please give everybody a chance to speak tonight. I beg you, please. Thank you.
I will tell you that we won't get to actually voting on this if I don't cut off the time because we actually have business to do. So the last one, Eugene Wander.
Ms. Piercey, members of the council, Ward Seven, Ms. Ortiz is where my tents pitched. The issue of camping in public parks as it relates to protests has been fought in many courts many times, particularly just recently with the, you know, the spread of the Occupy movement. In each of these situations, the complainants have lost their cases due to the court's ruling that though they possess the constitutional guarantees to assemble and the freedom of speech, this does not include the right to camp. Camping or not was not integral to their right to speech. New York, California, these are two of the states in which the Supreme Court has made this determination. The key to this all is the lack of constitutional protections on the camping issue. Allow me to read something. This is Section One from the Oregon Constitution, which reads, "Section One, Natural Rights Inherent in the People. We declare that all men, when they form a social compact, are equal in right, that all power is inherent in the people, that all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness, and that they have at all times a right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner as they think proper. They have at all times the right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such a manner as they may think proper." Occupy is a political movement whose goal is to alter and reform the current status quo in a system that has forgotten its responsibility to the citizens of this country. As well as speaking out, as well as marching, holding signs, we have chosen to Occupy in our attempt to effect change in the current political and economic environment. Occupy is the manner as we may think properer. For this movement and the Oregon Constitution grants this determination on our part. As far as concerns as to which version of the Constitution, state or federal, the city is bound by, I feel that this was addressed in the State versus Henry. Earl Henry was charged with obscenity for selling adult material through his adult shop. The Oregon Supreme Court dismissed the case stating that the Oregon Constitution's allowance for freedom of speech was broad. Thank you.
Ms. Piercey?
Sorry.
I have progress questions.
Sorry.
I have progress questions, please.
Sorry, sorry. Going to close the hearing?
This is what we vote. Mayor, you're seated. I have my testimony ready. There are people who are not able to testify. There are a lot of people who are not able to testify. I think there are testimony to you, Mayor Piercey.
So, um...
How can I give my testimony?
You can't speak, yes. You have to remember the service.
All right.
Those who are here, there are people who disagree with you.
I don't need to talk, Mayor Piercey, with all due respect.
With all due respect.
I want to know how the rest of you that are testimony to you.
So we have, I actually haven't been able to answer.
I don't want to discuss it, you know.
So what we don't do is have people come and yell at council from the audience. If you asked any of staff, they would be glad to tell you where you can leave the information that you would like to leave. Then to the back, there's a table and you can leave whatever information you'd like to at the table. I'm sorry that we didn't have time, but you guys told me it was important to you to be able to have this decision talked about tonight, so that's what I'm trying to do for you, okay? We're going to go on now to the next item on our agenda is Action Item Number Three, the adoption of a resolution adopting a supplemental budget. So this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and the city manager, you want to tell them what this is about?
This is a required public hearing on the FY-12 First Supplemental Budget. The supplemental budget recognizes new revenue, marginal beginning working capital, and authorizes other unanticipated changes in legal appropriations. The supplemental budget also reflects the budget committee and city council motions passed last spring. Approval is requested tonight in order to allow for necessary legal appropriations.
Thank you, city manager. So we have two people signed up to speak. First is John Borowski, followed by Nancy Woodkey. John?
I'm just going to give it a second to calm down, if that's all right.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. My name's John Borowski, Ward Three. Mayor, city council, city manager and staff. I'm speaking to you about the supplemental budget one that you have before you. On December eighth, the citizen members of the budget committee were briefed on this budget, and I'd like to thank the staff for being able to do that with us and make us aware of the issues that are being presented to you tonight for adoption. I think there's several things that we can be proud of in this supplemental budget. We were able to do some things with one-time monies that take care of one-time issues and have a positive impact on our community. We were able to help fund a new park, Creekside Park. We were also able to help the road fund with a hundred thousand dollars to help unimproved streets and other streets that are very potholed and filled. We also were able to do a hundred thousand dollars to help maintain our parks, which are very much in need of repair and maintenance and ongoing maintenance. So I think those were good uses of one-time money. Also, we were able to, in this supplemental budget, allocate twenty-five thousand dollars to help the homeless community with portable restrooms at the Carlos camps, something that the budget committee directed the city manager to do if there was an extra allotment of money, and I think that was a wise use by the city manager. We were also able to put aside some money for this building here, what will become of it and where will the city council and the community meet, and that's an ongoing process, but we've been able to put some money away to help fund that when it's time. Also, there was money for the Buckley House and the gang prevention, areas that are needed in this, you know, issues that are needed in the city that we helped the city manager identify in the budget process, and because of the way that the supplemental budget and the marginal beginning working capital came out, we were able to do. Finally, we were able to put one point, almost one point nine million dollars into the savings account. Whereas this is a reduction in actually where the savings account was, we're still real close to what our goal of what we should have in the bank of eight percent is. We knew that there was going to be a dip this year because of anticipated increases in some of our expenses, but all in all, I think this is a good supplemental budget put forth by the manager, and I hope you accept it.
Thank you. Next up is Nancy Woodkey.
Hi, my name is Nancy Woodkey and I've lived in Eugene for most of my whole life. I understand that you guys have a whole lot of things in front of you right now, and this probably sounds like kind of a silly request, but the item that's on the temporary budget or whatever the allocation is something that would keep the livability of our city good for a long time to come and for lots of us. Laurawood Golf Course is something that's more than just a golf course, it's enjoyed by walkers, joggers, dogs, and all kinds of different things. And I know that there's lots of other issues out there that are more important, but if you look at Portland, they have five municipal golf courses. There are things that people learn on a golf course that you don't learn on other places, and kids in particular are given a chance to see things out there that they might not see in other places. As with any asset, there's a lot of different things that need care. Our parks, our recreation, all different kinds of things like that need lots of things. Our community is working on ways to make it a long-term, self-sustainable thing, but right now it just needs a temporary thing. So that's all I want to say, and I hope you guys will consider it as part of the livability of our city and one of the things that makes Eugene so amazing. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to close a public hearing, and the council president, which was motion on the table?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 5049, adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the city of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eleven, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, would you please vote? Eight in favor and nine in opposition, it passes. I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. City manager, this is a hearing on the adoption of the resolution adopting the supplemental budget. Do you have any comments you want to make?
Thank you, mayor. This is a required public hearing on the FY First Supplemental Budget for the URA. As stated previously, supplemental budgets recognize unanticipated changes in legal appropriation, and approval is again requested tonight in order to allow for necessary legal appropriations.
I don't have anyone who has signed up for a hearing on this, so I think that we are ready to open and close the hearing and then have the council president with the motion on the table. I move to...
necessitating an amendment to Eugene Code 5.005 in order to maintain consistency between state statutes and the Eugene Code.
Thank you, city manager. Council President?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5058, an ordinance concerning state traffic laws, amending Section 5.005 of the Eugene Code 1971, and providing an effective date.
Second?
Moved and seconded. City attorney?
Mayor, I was looking at something future in the agenda. Did you open and close the public hearing on this?
I did. So, we're ready to vote on this? Do you please vote? There we go. Eight in favor and none in opposition, passes. So, now we go on to the next item, which is an ordinance vacating a portion of Moss Street located between East 15th Avenue and East 17th. City manager?
This item is to deliberate and take action on street vacation requests submitted by the University of Oregon. The property affected by this proposed action is the entire north-south right-of-way of Moss Street between East 15th and East 17th avenues. Eugene City Council will address approval criteria from Eugene Code 9.8725 in making a decision on the proposed vacation, which states in part that the vacation can be approved if the council finds that approval of the vacation is in the public interest. Draft findings related to the public interest are included in the council package as part of Attachment C.
Put the motion on the table, and then I'll call on councillor polling. Go ahead.
I move to adopt Council Bill 5052, an ordinance vacating a portion of Moss Street located between East 15th Avenue and East 17th Avenue.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Councillor polling?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge the letter received from Greg Rickoff, who I see is in the audience this evening, the Director of Community Relations for the University of Oregon, outlining the extensive community engagement that they did in this process. There's quite a few meetings with the neighborhood associations and with the officers, as well as councillor Zelenka leading a discussion on this issue. So, this is an issue that's been very well vetted with the community that's going to be most impacted, and I just want to thank the University of Oregon in taking this approach to handling this.
Okay. I think you're ready to vote on it. Would you please vote? Eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. So, now we're to the item of the evening here. This is the exemption to code on overnight camping, Occupy Eugene. Council President, you want to put a motion on the table?
I do. I move to amend the city council's November 9th motion exempting Occupy Eugene from the overnight camping prohibition under Section 4.815 of the Eugene Code by changing the date from December 15th until May 15th.
Is there a second? I hear no second. Another motion?
There's no second.
Is there another motion that someone wants to? Then councillor Brown?
I'm basically, I'm basically going to make a motion to adopt Modified Option 3 that councillor Zelenka has provided as well.
Moved and seconded?
For comment, for people that are following in the AIS, this Option 3 is not the same modified option in the AIS.
Why don't you read it into the, read the motion?
I don't think you need necessarily substitute motion. I'm not sure how you handle, but just in case people are following, it's not the third one in the AIS, in the packet.
But, do you have a, do they have a copy of this? City attorney, and you do, okay. So, why don't you read it, councillor Brown?
Okay. Modified Option 3. Summary is to extend the camping exemption and provide transition services until the completion of the community task force work. Number one, mayor would immediately form a community task force to report back to council within 90 days to identify strategies on homelessness for council consideration. The task force would include, could include council members, Occupy Eugene representatives, nonprofit agency representatives, and other community members. Number two, hire St. Vincent de Paul to lead an effort to mobilize and coordinate transitional human services for homeless campers and consult with Occupy Eugene about the security and management of the Occupy Eugene camp. These transition human services will not replicate the OE camp experience, however, they could provide opportunities for OE homeless campers to continue to receive basic services, such as a legal place to camp or stay, food, clothing, and medical services, while the task force develops recommendations for a more sustainable and effective provision of services. Number three, temporarily increase the funding for the car camping program and expand the program scope to include legal tent camping on sites when appropriate. Number four, create a short-term site like an Egan warming center for the rest of the winter, specifically for chronic homeless with behavioral and addiction issues, essentially a secure temporary wet housing pilot program. The facility would be open seven days per week, but with hours restricted to 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., and staffed by nonprofit agencies and trained community volunteers. Number five, extend the camping exemption for XX days, that's not filled in, to allow full implementation of transition services. And finally, number six, occupation Eugene nonprofit agencies and city staff are continuing to meet to discuss these possibilities. The cost for transition services such as these is likely to exceed $100,000. City manager will provide funding options at your Wednesday, December 14th, 2011 work session. End of document.
Okay. Yes.
Two things, mayor. First, I'd like to suggest, rather than say hire St. Vincent de Paul, let the motion read, hire a nonprofit agency, because it's the city manager, not the council, that selects providers. And then second, yes, and then second, you can't adopt a motion that says XX days.
Right. We don't know what XX days is, yep.
I thought we might want to discuss that. Okay, let's scratch hire St. Vincent de Paul and-
A social service agency?
A social service agency.
Yep.
And let's say 45 days, for starters.
Is that acceptable to you, councillor Ortiz? Okay, so that's, got that? Okay, so now we're ready for a discussion. Councillor Ortiz?
Thank you, mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight so we can get an opportunity to respond to the comments from, from the public hearing. I just, I know it's difficult to come forward and speak your mind when it's not the popular idea, so I just appreciate everybody coming out. I would like to start with councillors kind of modifying this motion. I think this is a good place to start. I don't know that this is where we'll end. I don't know what kind of support we'll have, but the one thing I want to make sure is that if this motion passes, that it's something that Occupy Eugene folks are willing to meet us with. And when I'm talking about meeting halfway, I mean, I feel like we've been, I personally, I don't know what the city has done if they've met people halfway with Occupy Eugene, but it's kind of like if you look at like a memorandum of understanding or something along that line, you know, this is kind of the template that we're going to give to the city manager. Hopefully, it'll pass, send him on his way to work with Occupy Eugene folks, and see where we can, where we can, where we can meet on this. So, I would like this motion to pass, to send the city manager forward, but what I also like to do is for Occupy Eugene leadership to agree to what we're saying here, and then have the city manager come back to us on Wednesday and say, this is, this is what they've agreed to, basically, and then we can, then we can say, okay, that's a motion that's going to pass. I think it's pretty wordy and pretty meaty. I thank councillor Zelenka for putting this forward. It was kind of put forward at the meeting this afternoon, so the community didn't get a chance to see it, but I think that it kind of gets in the direction of more where I'm comfortable with. So, I hope that other councillors will comment, and hopefully, you know, we'll get to someplace here tonight so that the city manager can meet with group tomorrow, in your free time, city manager, and, and see where we can meet on, with the community on this. And I wanted to just say that I did protest in the '60s, and I was proud of it, and I would do it again if I needed to. Councillor Zelenka?
Yeah, I talked to a lot of people before crafting this motion, and I think it covers a lot of the things that Occupy Eugene is trying to accomplish in the homeless issue, and tries to put some structure to it by having the task force and by hiring a social service agency to help mobilize and coordinate transitional services, and increasing the car camping program, and creating an Egan warming center-like program for chronically homeless and behavioral addicted, and addiction issued folks, as well as extending the camp. I guess to, I like what councillor Ortiz is talking about, and I too would like to hear what Occupy Eugene has in response to this with respect to how, what kind of skin they're going to have in the game. So, I guess I would move to table the motion until Wednesday, December 14th, and have the city manager meet with Occupy Eugene, present the modified 3 option, and find out what they're specifically willing to do to meet the council halfway.
Table the date certain.
Table to December 14th, which is Wednesday.
No discussion on the date certain.
Table, a motion to table is not debatable, right?
Correct, but a motion to, it's not a motion to table because it's a date certain, so it's really a motion to postpone until-
No.
We're not done with the discussion yet.
It's not a motion to table, it's a motion to postpone, so there can be discussion on that.
So, it can be discussed, but you would not normally combine a motion to postpone with the other things that you added to it. I have an alternative to suggest to you that I think gets you to the same place.
Okay.
Which would be a substitute motion to direct the city manager to bring back a final motion on Wednesday after discussing the modified Option 3 motion with Occupy Eugene representatives.
I'll accept that.
Is there a second?
So, that does not preclude conversation on this motion or the motion in hand.
We need a second.
Already seconded.
Did you second? Okay, moved and seconded. All right, we'll continue the discussion now. Councillor Clark?
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate everybody coming out. I also appreciated the opportunity for people to speak passionately about how they feel on this. We didn't get a chance to respond earlier, and there are a couple of things I wanted to address. One, the issue that a couple of people brought up about money was reflected in the information we got from the city manager about estimates of what it would cost to implement some of the scenarios that the city manager put forward as, as options. And so, I guess I would ask the city manager for a cursory estimate of what was just presented here in terms of cost to the city.
What I would do is go back to what we presented earlier today. What we talked about is depending on the transition services themselves, those could cost up to, we estimate anywhere from $50,000 to $150,000 for transition services, which we offered in the, earlier today with respect, and having not talked with Terry McDonald or any other service provider myself on what would actually be encompassed in number two that's here.
And another $270,000 for the police, right?
What Chief Kearns mentioned today, that he would estimate, depending on what this results in the number two in the modified motion, he would anticipate that the cost would not be that much, but it would be more than what we're spending today. And I don't know what that specific number is because we just haven't talked to the service.
So, it's at least possible that the totality could rise to quarter of a million?
It's, it's possible, but I'm not saying that it will get to that point.
That's, that's what we were talking about before with regard to the cost. The other piece that was, that's particularly difficult for me here is still back to this issue of an event versus a group, and I appreciated hearing different people's thoughts on that. Andrea's, excuse me, councillor Ortiz's concern earlier was about accountability, and I share it. I certainly, you know, we all know that at some point that this will change, transition, and whatever word you want to use. It's not if, it's how and when. And certainly, I would like to see it done so in a way that's peaceful as possible, that serves people, that allows people to be heard, it treats people with dignity, and maybe even solves some new problems that we have, okay? Finds new ways to solve problems. But when we're talking about making an agreement with this group, once we're saying we're allowing a group to do something, then we're kind of changing it. We're treating a group of citizens differently. We made kind of a big point previously that it's an event. So, if it's an event, who has the authority to both speak for the group and to hold the rest of the group members accountable for the agreement that's made? And specifically, when I say that, I was, I enjoyed hearing from Ms. Reagan, she's a very eloquent speaker. I often find time to read the Occupy Eugene Facebook page, and I enjoyed a conversation there that went on for quite a while about her authority to speak for the rest of the group. And so, I'm wondering, who is it exactly that we're making this agreement with, and how can we be assured that we don't, you know, see some members of the group or some folks who say they speak for the group say that they're making an agreement, but then hundreds of other people say, we're not going to abide by that? I think I have a concern that this is a prescription for disaster.
What?
No.
But, what I would say is-
How do you intend to find a group of people who can speak for this group and do so with authority?
But, how it's worked so far is we will meet with representatives of the group. Generally, they would say that they don't speak for the entire group, given that as we've worked with them and identified issues, we've worked through most issues, and they have taken particular action, particularly as we've brought those up. And so, I would expect this to go, to carry similar to that kind of a model.
Okay. So, if we've spent a couple hundred thousand dollars to transition this, and we've made a good faith effort to have an agreement, but still there are a group, an indeterminate number at the moment, a group of folks who decide they're not leaving and they're not gonna, and they're gonna resist, then what's the point of us doing this? I guess that's a rhetorical question for my colleagues.
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you. First, I'm really sorry that everyone who wanted to speak didn't get, wasn't allowed to speak tonight. But, the reason I made the motion the way I did, people have asked for more time, and that's what, and I thought about how much time, and I thought May 15th would give, at least the weather will be a little better by then, and it gives enough time to think about it. And I don't, I don't like the idea of hiring a group who probably are low-paid to begin with. I think what my idea was, after much thought, was to give the group, the Occupy Eugene group, more time to figure out something and to accept donations from people who are willing to help, rather than getting money from the city. And that's what I still hope we'll come down with, but I've seconded the motion to postpone because I hope we will come back to another kind of motion by Wednesday. Thank you.
Councillor Farr?
Thank you, mayor. You know, I'm going to speak to why I'm not going to support this motion, and why, if it does come on Wednesday, I still will not support it on Wednesday. I spoke earlier about the major concerns I have regarding sanitation and spread of disease at the camp. Those haven't been satisfied to me at this point in time. We have spent a lot of time and effort since 1947 in Eugene, working with homeless and passing a number of different ordinances and working in so many ways to help homeless that I don't believe that is an issue of this, that is not the issue of this camp. There are homeless people all over Eugene. But the reason I made the motion the way I did, people have asked for more time and that's what, and I thought about how much time and I thought May 15th would give, at least the weather will be a little better by then and it gives enough time to think about it. And I don't, I don't like the idea of hiring a group who probably are low-paid to begin with. I think what my idea was, after much thought, was to give the group, the Occupy Eugene group, more time to figure out something and to accept donations from people who are willing to help rather than getting money from the city. And that's what I still hope we'll come down with, but I've seconded the motion to postpone because I hope we will come back to another kind of motion by Wednesday. Thank you.
Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm going to speak to why I'm not going to support this motion and why, if it does come on Wednesday, I still will not support it on Wednesday. I spoke earlier about the major concerns I have regarding sanitation and spread of disease at the camp. Those haven't been satisfied to me at this point in time. We have spent a lot of time and effort since 1947 in Eugene, working with homeless and passing a number of different ordinances and working in so many ways to help homeless that I don't believe that is an issue of this, that is not the issue of this camp. There are homeless people all over Eugene and a small percentage of them are involved in this camp at all. To me, it really boils down to, can this be operated safely? And in looking at the camp, I'm not satisfied that the wastewater's being handled properly. I'm not satisfied that the streams and rivers are safe from the runoff. If you go to a construction site, you will see all kinds of mitigation taking place to avoid runoff into the storm drains. That's not happening at this site. And I'm afraid that beyond any other consideration, we're setting ourselves up very seriously for potential outbreak of disease, outbreak of sickness, and it's just not a tenable situation that has been addressed in my estimation at this point, and I don't see how it can be.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess the other thing, I have a couple more comments. And so I really appreciated Chuck Gerard from Whiteburg speaking through his interpreter, giving us the number of 50 to 100 people, 100 homeless people die every year in the city already. So, you know, that kind of puts a parameter on it for me, you know, after working, I've worked in the emergency room for a number of years and I can't, you know, they turn, they're, you know, the assaults that would come in throughout the community and the, all kinds of different situations that our homeless people face out there in the community is abhorrent. And I don't know that Occupy Eugene is responsible for any of it. I mean, we're all responsible for it as a community. Accountability is not a bad word. I'm accountable to my voters. Chief of Police is accountable to us. City manager, we're accountable, the city manager is accountable to us. So when I use that word, please don't take it that I'm asking you, and I guess people don't really know me because I'm pretty, I'm pretty cut and dry, you know, I just want, I just get at the facts. I don't try, I don't usually talk a lot, so when I say that, I'm trying to minimize is that I want dialogue. I want to make sure that if we're going to try and work with any group in town, that there's a response to us, and I guess that's the accountability that I'm looking for. And I guess, Counselor Clark, at the end of the day, for me, if this doesn't work out, at least I know I've done my best faith effort to try, and not only to represent my community that voted me in, but people who I have empathy for in the community. And I try to be responsive to everybody in the community, but my, my background and my history in life leads me more, you know, I can identify with people who do not have homes. I mean, I just really feel that that is somewhere, I know that we have a long history in the city of Eugene for doing this, but, you know, in Ward 7, you know, when I drive, when I drive down the street and go anywhere in town, there's always people on my street corners. I always see people walking down the street. I always see mothers with kids pushing their strollers with bags of groceries. I don't think that that's optimal for them. I mean, you know, and it's all relevant, you know. The other concern that I've heard is about health issues there, and I just think about the times that I've, oh, my kids are going to kill me, the times that we've camped out and been without a home, a place to live ourselves. And, you know, you learn to live, you know, life isn't always easy and you survive and you become hardy and you know how to, you know how to make those choices in your life and how to make it a better place for you. So I hope that this is an opportunity for Occupy Eugene to work with us on addressing, and I'm not expecting Occupy Eugene to obliterate homelessness in our community, that would only be a dream come true. But I do think that every step that we can make towards that effort would really, would really please me personally.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I also appreciate all the folks coming down and speaking. I wish everybody could have had a chance to speak. We normally end at nine o'clock, so you can see we're already in overtime, and we want to make sure we have the opportunity to have a good discussion. And so in order for us to do that, we don't want to feel rushed. So we did hear a lot of what you had to say, and I appreciate that a lot. I have also talked to a lot of folks over the last couple of weeks, and I think it has been very helpful. And I've heard folks all the way at, they need to shut down tomorrow to, we need to have six months in the current location to design something else. And somewhere between those two extremes is where I would like to be. And I know that even a lot of the Occupy folks recognize that the need to transition into something else is something that they want as well as us. And so how much time does that take? And I think that the offer of 45 days is not probably what the Occupy folks want, and it's also not necessarily what we want. In fact, we might want a different time than you want, but this may be the place where we could meet in the middle. And I like the idea of postponing this till Wednesday because it will allow the city manager to talk to at least some of the folks to determine whether or not, as Counselor Ortiz says, there can be a mutual trust that this can actually take place, that this can happen. There's some, some good things here. I am aware that there is a governing council, so there is a group that does meet regularly to confirm decisions. And that governing council could process this, and I think that would be an important part of whether or not we were able to establish that confidence and faith that something could take place. I like the notion of being able to allow our human service providers to assist because I think that can be a very valuable part, not only for us, but a very valuable part for you as well, because these folks have been doing this work for decades and they know a lot about this problem as a systemic issue. And while there's a lot of enthusiasm and passion within the Occupy movement, there can be a lot of great expertise and talent and even resources from the human service side as well. Take advantage of that, it can benefit you enormously. So I am very interested in seeing what we can come up with for final approval on Wednesday. I think this may hopefully be the step in a direction that can resolve this with a minimum of disruption. It won't be what everybody wants, it won't be what we want, and it won't be what you want, but sometimes the best solution is the one that neither side likes, but both sides can live with, and maybe that's what we can get to.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, for Wednesday's meeting, there's two things that I'm most interested in hearing about. One would be the estimate of cost, once you have a chance to speak with the police chief and kind of run all of the potential pieces of this out. Second would be, in your meetings and discussions with their council, how many they estimate will cooperate and how many will not? How many people they believe will agree to disband the camp in 45 days and how many will not? I'm challenged to support the motion tonight because it gives tacit approval to the idea. I'm very much interested in hearing the discussion on Wednesday. But again, a part of this seems to require, in other words, the discussion has been said several times that the homeless services and some of the issues around camping are an integral part of the protest, and so we're now subsidizing a protest in the sense of what we're willing to expend on it. And for me, I defend anybody's right to protest all day long, but I have some concerns when we start talking about spending taxpayers' monies in order to further a protest and to support it because there are many people who may have very strong disagreements with that message. So I'm challenged to vote in favor of it tonight, but we'll be very interested in the discussion on Wednesday.
Counselor Polin.
Mayor, can I just quickly respond? One is, yes, we will provide cost estimate and also potential sources of dollars, so we'll provide both of those. And then the second piece around, what, I don't read this motion here so far that says, when we extend the camping exemption for 45 days, it doesn't say, I assume we would come back at that time and you would then decide whether to continue that exemption or not. And so this, as it stands right now, the motion would not say that it ends in 45 days unless the council provides a different direction than what I interpret here, or if that's a different interpretation.
I suppose I was kind of just listening to my colleague next to me and what he was saying because I sensed that both he and Counselor Ortiz were kind of saying the same thing, but perhaps you're right. I don't know whether or not we're intending to close it, I suppose. I think I would find that to be a very interesting outcome of this discussion because that's kind of been the tenor of what I've been hearing from my colleagues, that this is the meat in the middle process is to, is to have a transition that's peaceful and serves people well. So I'll be interested to find out if that's not really what we're doing.
Counselor Zelenka. Oh, sorry, yes. Did I skip by you? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I will be happy to support the motion to postpone because as far as I'm concerned, there's a lot of missing information in this motion. I want to find out how much this is going to cost us. We have no idea what a social service agency is going to charge us to coordinate the human services for the homeless camp, whatever it is they're going to do. Also, I want to know where the money's coming from. Like I said in the work session, what other services are we going to have to cut? Who's going to get laid off? Where is this money coming from? As far as I'm concerned, you can take the entire council contingency and use that if that's where it's going to come from, because like I said earlier, we don't need to be going on these world trips and across the country on training and stuff. That's not necessary. Modern technology, you can do conferencing by video, Skype, whatever you want to use. The part that concerns me is the extending the camping exemption for 45 days. Unlike my colleague Counselor Pryor, I myself would rather leave it at December 15th and allow the chief and you, city manager, to figure out how to close down that mess as soon as practical after December 15th. And whatever as soon as practical means is, you know, what's a reasonable person think that may mean? We've had that discussion before. But to continue to extend the exemption, as far as I'm concerned, is, we're not getting anywhere with it. We don't need that camp to implement these other steps that have been recommended in this motion. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, we may have a discussion on Wednesday as to that 45-day period. I think that that may be our one sticking point because the rest of the recommendations in here sound pretty good. It's a good step forward to addressing this issue. It's just the funding, you know, where's the money coming from? Who's going to get laid off? What is, what's going to happen? And that 45-day period is not, is not sitting well with me.
Counselor Farr. Oops, sorry, I'm just going to keep skipping down the line here. Alan Denpen.
Cut him off. So I get what the Occupy movement is about. I am upset and deeply concerned about the widening gap between the rich and the poor, about the corporate greed and the excess that's been going on, the shenanigans and the fraud that's been perpetrated by our financial and our banking and our mortgage industries that has occurred without any accountability and that has brought us to this economic crisis. The bailouts for the rich corporations where everyday people are putting out, put out of their homes onto the streets and adding to the already unacceptable number of homeless people. And I'm outraged by these things, so I get it, and I think we need to fix our system. So I get what that's about. Every Occupy movement in the country has been a little different, and Occupy Eugene has been amazing and different, and it has embraced homelessness as a major issue. And while some people have misinterpreted my call for Occupy Eugene to help on the homeless issue, not solve it, and it is a world-class problem. We've been dealing in it for, I've been personally dealing in it for over 20 years and other people, Terry McDonald and Richie Wyman, for way longer than that. And we're still not there, but we make incremental progress. Occupy Eugene has captured people's imagination. They've also, or at least you've captured their attention. And I think it's incumbent upon you to use this opportunity to make meaningful change and benefit the homelessness issue. And so if we can make some changes there that help that issue and move it forward and make a jump forward, I think that is a success. It's a huge success and you should be proud of it. So that's where I'm going with this. My intent was that at the end of the 45-day period, which would be January 29th if I did my math right, that the encampment would end. The transition services are there to take, to move the homeless campers in Occupy Eugene into more stable conditions with better services, but that was my intent. And so that Occupy Eugene would then evolve into its next better and higher thing that it would be doing, but the encampment wouldn't be there. And as far as the costs are concerned, the last part of the motion, which we'll bring up on Wednesday hopefully, is that the city manager will provide options at our Wednesday meeting for funding options. So we do need to have that, but when we do that, I'm afraid you're going to, you're going to end up with ranges of cost because a lot of this stuff still needs to be figured out, and we have not figured out all of this. So I suspect what we'll get back is from here to here and it's not $112,049. So, and that's acceptable to me. As we kind of figure this out, it'll be an ongoing process.
Let me, Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Giddy, Madam Mayor. You know, I suspect that this is going to pass and we'll be looking at it again on Tuesday, on Wednesday, and I'm glad for that because that'll give you, the city manager, a chance to answer some of the questions that have been raised this evening. But you know, my concern once again is safety, and I'll visit the camp between now and then with an open mind, and I'll visit Mr. McKee over here, John, and take a look at the kitchen because I have serious concerns about the amount of water being used, where the gray water is going, and if enough water is being used to sanitize the equipment that is being used to serve the food. So I'll visit with an open mind and see if my concerns can be alleviated once I visit the camp. There's a lot of water, and as I stated earlier, I, when I was the director of Food Lane County, we had a dining room downtown, we served 80 to 110 meals a day and used hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of gallons of water. And I just wonder where all the gray water is going and if it's being handled safely. I'll be, safely, I'll be, my eyes will be open and my ears will be open when I visit you at the camp. That being said, as a budget committee, we talk about funding human services and we wring our hands about funding human services in this community. We have a great many providers who do it without government money, but they do rely on, but others do rely on a certain amount of government money to fund their services, and they're being cut regularly. The services are being cut across the board, and many people who have had services through money provided to Lane County, through the city of Eugene, are no longer receiving those services. Each year, we look at about $150,000 as a supplemental part of the budget to additionally fund human services. In fact, four, three of the other councilors and myself are looking right now at how can we possibly come up with a revenue stream that will address the shortfall in human services that are across the county. Coincidentally, the $150,000 that we granted during the last budget cycle that may well go away in the next budget cycle is about the upper limit of the dollar amount that we're talking about tonight for extending the camp in order to provide a transition, about the same amount that we provide to human services for the entire city, for an entire year, being drawn away in, over the period of 15, 30, 45 days. To me, it just doesn't seem appropriate that so many services can be short-changed or held back for an ad hoc issue such as this. Now, that being said, homelessness is not an ad hoc issue, it's a chronic issue, and I will invite you to visit Forum Lane, click on Committee, and see how much the city of Eugene has done over the last 50 or 60 years for homelessness and other human services. So I'll look forward to visiting the camp, look forward with an open mind, and we'll revisit this, I suspect, on Wednesday.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Well, I basically was ready to vote for this option tonight. However, I think it's okay to postpone it till Wednesday to address Counselor Pryor, Counselor Ortiz's concerns, clean up the wording a little bit. I have a concern, I just plugged in 45 days, I don't know if that will be enough time to make a complete transition, and so I think, you know, when we reword it a little bit, we probably ought to say 45 days with another review because it's a pretty big, pretty big task to figure all this stuff out in 45 days. And I, I mean, we've got some really talented people in town here on the city staff and on the, in the human service agencies and at Occupy Eugene and supporters, but 45 days is a really short amount of time to do all these things that we're talking about here. So we ought to have language in there that says, well, we'll revisit it and decide whether we want to, you know, one last extension, because it'd really be a shame to be almost at the finish line in 45 days and then go, oh, everyone out, not quite done, pack up and go home. So we can, we can do that between now and Wednesday. I basically pretty much agreed with almost everything that Counselor Zelenka said a few minutes ago, so I won't paraphrase or repeat what I said earlier in the work session. There's been a concern about funding, you know, who's going to pay for this? Well, about 20 minutes, about 20 minutes ago, we unanimously approved the Moss Street vacation to the University of Oregon, and the city's going to get $1.8 million for that. So I see... So I see a funding source right there. I know we'll have to discuss that. Some should be held in prudent reserve, some should go for other, you know, all kinds of other, it's hard to say. I mean, that money's needed all the way across the board in the city, so, but perhaps some, a portion of it might be able to come from that. Anyway, I guess I'll just leave it at that for now. Thank you.
So, Mr. Manager, do you have something you want to say?
Just real quick clarification. I know Counselor Farr mentioned $150,000 this cost. What I wanted to just make sure is that there's really two pieces of the cost that we'll be taking a look at. One is for the transition services. The other would be if there's additional monies needed for any security, safety, health kinds of things that we think would need to be in there. So I just wanted to clarify that there's two pieces to that puzzle. Thank you, Manager, for that clarification.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. And also, I would think that there's, there's probably a budgetary component to the locational issues as well, because points number two and three and four, to a certain extent, talk about locations where people can transition to. And the, whether it's 45 days or whether on Wednesday it gets modified in some fashion, it still reads under .5 to allow full implementation of transition services. And I thought I heard Counselor Zelenka talking about the logical transition of campers to some other option. In other words, that we are going to decamp Occupy Eugene at some point in the near future. So again, my question to you is maybe not, you know, a complete headcount of everybody, but I really would like to get some sense from the folks that you meet with. How many are willing to decamp at all, and how many will not, no matter how many days we put on the piece of paper? Thank you.
So before we vote, I just want to say, I feel like we say things in our work session, and then you feel like you need to say them again in the regular council meeting. But when this, when Occupy Eugene began, we had a march of 2,000 people in our community, and then we had a couple other demonstrations, and the major part of the financial impact that we talked about thus far from Occupy Eugene is not from the camping site, it's from the police being around trying to ensure the safety during the demonstration. So it is, it is part of the demonstration and not part of the camping site, although as time is extended over the camping site, we do accrue some more expenses. And so the other point I would say is, yes, Occupy is a, is a political movement, and it is also emerging and shining light on a big issue that we need to deal with in our community, and that's the folks that are, remain unhoused. I want to thank the 70 people who came and signed up, and I wanted to just say that I tried my best to treat everyone fairly, in a way that I would want to treat you if I agreed with you or disagreed with you. And so whatever your views, I wanted to be sure that we had time to deal with this issue tonight, not for us, but for you. And so that's why we tried to handle it this way. I think inequity is a big issue, being without housing is a big issue. I believe that we can and must do better. And so I'm hoping with the work that we're doing, that we're going to take at least a step forward for our, for our community. I thank you for caring, that's what makes this a great community. Thank you very, very much. And now let's vote.
Madam Mayor, can we have the motion read, please?
Oh, the motion is to...
The motion to postpone.
Mayor? Move to direct the city manager to bring back a final motion on Wednesday after discussing the modified Option 3 motion with Occupy Eugene representatives.
All right. Now, please vote. Seven in favor and one in opposition, it passes, and with that, we finish our business of the evening. Thank you all.[1783.21][1783.21][applause]